I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Welcome to the Chelsea Troy Township School Corporation, regular board, school trustees Tuesday, December the ninth. We'll call all members who are present, adoption and the agenda Tuesday, December ninth. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Larry. Any discussion on the agenda additions or changes? There is none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Reports. William Tell.
Just watch. That's great. We've got some important things going on. So we had Boomer, the Pacers mascot came and did like an anti-bullying assembly. It was really neat. Gave out Pacers gear. Students really enjoyed that. So we were happy to have that. Our third graders went to the Evansville Children's Museum and they had some really cool updates there that they got to go see. So that was a big hit for them. We recently received a grant from Perry County Community Foundation and the Finn family, and that's for literacy. So that money, I think it was around $3,700, that'll all go towards anything literacy related. Teachers can use it to buy classroom books, anything that's going to help students succeed in reading. We also have a school culture team this year that has put on games for staff. So we've been doing games throughout our building to kind of help boost staff morale. And that's been really fun. We played like a turkey, find the turkey on Thanksgiving, like before Thanksgiving, and they loved that. We also have a pep club this year. So the pep club has grown, it's pretty big. So if you go to one of our ball games, you'll see the pep club in the stands. Emily Park's done a great job organizing that. They show up to all the games. They create themes. So they're trying to be like the high school. So it's really neat to see them getting involved.
Are they separate from the high school pep club?
They've been coming to the elementary games. So yeah, fifth and sixth. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.
Mr. Ramsey. Can you do our CTE talks? We have Sarah Spire. She's so excited. What's that? Oh, Sarah went. I told her to say no, but she listened. So she teaches basically, Sarah, just welcome, what up, Sarah? And she's explained our program, our CTE program, and really the whole vineyard ties up very happy with. Our CTE program is probably one of the best in state. They got bias, I get it. But the kids, they love Sarah. Some great relationship, great rapport with kids, and she does a great job. She's going to explain a little bit what she does.
Yeah. So this is year two of the marketing pathway, first year for digital marketing. So we have launched our content Fridays, which we try to promote our CTE programs, but also just like anything that's going on within the school. But we also do kind of like, I don't know if you've seen it on TikTok or on Instagram, it's called Marksman Media. We have kids, if they have ideas of something that's trending, we'll record it. That way we can get the analytics. My marketing kids will look and see like, okay, who's hitting, who's scrolling, why are they scrolling? And we'll dissect it to see, okay, what can we post next to get more engagement? In my marketing class, we actually just wrapped up our junior juice packaging design, which we used Adobe and Canva. With this, the students actually got to come up with their own juice box design, whatever they wanted. They did a prototype feedback and then it was graded within the class. We have done some event promotions within the school, just with our athletic clubs, any flyers around the school you see. We try to take a big hand in making those. We developed the concepts for our Marks Media and our marketing pathway logo. So the, actually on the second, the second page right here, you'll see our Marksman Media logo that was done by one of the students. And also those papers just give students a rundown of the program. We've made those for all of our CTE pathways, for orientations, stuff like that, for students that are coming in if they want to take one of our pathways or not. Growth and accomplishments, we have more collaboration between our CTE programs. Ms. Kleeman and I, we go hand in hand quite a bit, especially with her innovate within program that she's doing right now. And students have actually taken a lot more initiative to be the role of the content creation. And I finally get to like step back a little bit and make them up with ideas. Some short-term goals that we've had so far this year is launching our content Fridays with my marketing class, finalizing our logos, and we hope that this next semester we can increase some partnerships within our local businesses. Long-term goals, we would love to have a student-run store. It would just help students with learning how to manage inventory, sales, merchandising, branding, and customer service. And then we also would like to look to have a student-run media team. That way they can just take reins of everything that goes on within the school, updating the websites, things like that, to kind of get it more us being able to do it instead of outside. And then we also, I picked up computing foundations for my eighth grade class, which this helps with fulfill the new statewide computer science requirement for the updated new diploma. So with that, we just go over Google Workspace. We still hit on digital citizenship etiquette, things like that. And we also have been doing some coding in that class as well to fulfill that. So that some students probably, when they get up to high school, your sciences, maybe the first thing pops ahead, they'd get that semester out before they even get up into high school. So it's kind of the rundown of the marketing pathway.
How many students do you have in your marketing class?
I have 20 in my marketing fundamentals and I have 26 in my digital marketing.
More than last year?
It is more than last year. Yes, more than last year.
Can we get the student-run school store quicker?
I would love to.
I would love to. And I want Chelsea to have a food truck. She's afraid of that. No, I told her already.
Oh, really?
You need to sell food truck.
See what I can do.
Keep marketing our school system. Terrific story to tell. Yep. Keep the kids involved.
This, this, this year, this group has been very hands-on, like eager. Last year, you know, it was new year, first time having it. It was like trying to figure out, how are we going to do this? So this year it's been a lot better. So hopefully it just continues to grow. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey, do you have anything to add? Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Report from the County Revolt Commission. Got a meeting coming up. Nothing really new to report. I'll let you know after the next meeting. Communications for the public. Sorry, I was going to draft that. I didn't. Everybody signed up? Thank you. Next up, item four, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion. Before the vote, make sure everybody saw that we did receive a resignation yesterday and we included that in consent agenda. It is a two week, so I mean, she's going to stay with us the rest of the semester, but I appreciate that. Precisely, precisely.
Ross has made a motion. There's no order of discussion. All those in favor accepting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. New business.
William Tell has no recommendations, so we will jump to item B with Tell City Junior Senior High School. And the recommendation we have there for Mr. Ramsey is for Amy Kleeman as the junior high CNA. We do have her background checked in, so I ask for your approval on Amy tonight.
A motion.
Make a motion to approve Amy Kleeman for high school CNA.
Any discussion? There is none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next up, athletics.
We have a few athletic recommendations, some volunteer assistant junior high cheer coaches in Amanda Ames, Emily Park, Sharon Noble, and Angie Fori. They're all staff members, so background checks are on file. And we have a volunteer assistant football coach in Zach Hensel. We do have him working on his background check.
I have a motion.
I make a motion to accept all of them as a group.
Thank you, Larry. Any discussion on the individuals? There is none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Building use.
The softball club is requesting access to the barn January through May for practice. They provide their certificate of liability, feeder program for the softball team, obviously. So I'm recommending you authorize the use for that this time.
A motion.
Make a motion to approve the softball club.
Any discussion? Oh, one thing I, did you ever get on the facility to finalize the combination of all the electric?
We're getting bids because the price exceeded the minimum for just taking one. Came in 38 to consolidate three into one. So what's happening is TC Electric Department has went ahead and installed electric at the barn. And we are waiting on, I think we've got two bids. We're waiting on a third now to consolidate. Right now there are three boxes at meters, thank you, at softball field. And we pay a minimum fee on each of them every month, and then on top of that we pay. So it's going to be money in our pockets to consolidate them, but the first initial proposal was outside of the just go ahead and do it range. So I had to get some bids. But that's where we're at with that. Yes.
My time to get the bids, everything would be after the season?
Well, we're working on the bids now. I mean, it could be, I just don't have them right now.
So it could be during?
But I didn't, I didn't want to stop the girls from getting into it. That's why. Oh, I would say before the season. I'm hopeful before the season. It depends on the weather and all that stuff, so.
Any other discussion on the building? There is none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Again, building use.
The band is requesting the aux gym in the cafeteria for their annual silent auction on March 28th. Mr. Ramsey has cleared them for use, so I recommend you approve the band.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve bands.
Thank you, Ross. Any discussion?
Is this the band boosters? And I'm just curious, like, why the band would have to request these? Is there a?
They're in concert with the boosters, but Natasha has requested this for them. So yes and no. That's why it's boosters and the band.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Insurance renewal.
So earlier this month, I had emailed you guys the proposals for the insurance, and I know it was a lot to go through. In your packets, I included the cheat sheet, which basically says, you can believe it or not, our insurance is actually going to go down this year. Point six percent, point six percent is still point six percent. Point eight, sorry. That includes brand new quarter of a million dollar bus and the increase in payroll. And both the new facilities. So what's happened is we have substantially saved on our work comp claims, and that has dropped our liability insurance. So instead of taking an increase on our premium this year, we actually get to break it for all the tests. So I would recommend to approve this before they change their minds and we get our insurance renewed.
Same deductible as before?
Same deductible, same everything. Yep.
And it's amazing to see it drop.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Things are getting cheaper today.
And it's very low.
It is 100% because of our work comp. We had a rough few years and actually had to go into the state pool because we had so many claims. And we've worked a lot to reduce that and paid off this year.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the 2025 insurance renewal.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Permission to pay vendors.
Every year about this time, we ask for permission to go ahead and pay the bills from basically today to the end of the year. That way, when the end of the year starts, we start fresh and clean. You get presented with all of those bills at the January meeting for approval, but this way we don't have to drag those out. So we ask for your permission basically to pay the bills through January one.
I have a motion. Is schools, calendar, fiscal years?
We run actually a year and a half on our budget. So our fiscal year goes to June, June 30 to July 1. But then we also have the January 1, December 31 cutoff for some bills and those kinds of things. So with the breaks and all that stuff, we just have to be able to pay them and get it all balanced at the, yeah. Close out the year. Right. Make a motion to pay vendor.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Transfer to rainy day.
So interest rates have been very good. And between what we have invested in rainy day and the interest that we received on operations and education, we are asking to put $250,000 into rainy day. Once again, this is all interest. This is not education fund money. This is not tax money. This is interest that we have made. And then we can then use for miscellaneous purposes if we transfer to rainy day.
Rainy day, up to about, what do you want it to be?
1.8-ish, give or take. We spend a little bit more on rainy day than we usually do. I mean, we paid the 60 for the bus this year. That's more than, than we normally spend, and we've paid for a few things out of rainy day, but not, not a substantial amount.
With the property tax cuts, it's ten.
It's nice to have, exactly right. Yeah, exactly right.
I have a motion that we accept the transfer to rainy day. Thank you, Larry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five to zero. Request to add dual credit sociology.
We've had dual credit sociology before. Vanessa Ford can teach it. We would like to add that back to our offerings for our students to help increase our Indiana core completions. Right now we have about 23 kids that would benefit from bringing this back in. And we want to keep encouraging those kids to take these dual credit classes and get those, those college courses out and keep mom and dad from having to pay for them. So this will take Vanessa out of social work for an hour out of the day, but it will benefit us in other ways, we believe. And the rest of the counseling staff believe they can, they can pick up that hour. So we ask for your permission for her to teach dual credit social this year.
See, we've had it before.
Yes. For that, how long ago did we have social? Was it two or three years?
About three years ago. Yeah. See, there's like four, five classes that were changed. You know, this is like 25 years, 43, long, like this, like also.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to add dual credit.
Any other discussion? There is none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Resolution in support of military families.
This is something actually I've looked at for quite a while, and we're fortunate that we have Michelle Glenn as our family outreach coordinator at William Tell. She grabbed this and ran with it when I asked her to. This would get the school purple star status with the state. You have to have several criteria checked off. Michelle has taken the coursework. She would serve as the point of contact for the corporation. She's done all of the training. I worked on a webpage with Michelle to get up and running. We already do the, the annual programs for our veterans. And this will serve as a resource for our military families here in Tell City. It also guarantees a veteran interview for a position, doesn't guarantee the job, but it guarantees the interview. But one last component they have is for the board to accept the resolution that is included in this package that basically commits the school to helping support our veterans. So with your approval, we'll authorize that resolution and we'll submit to the state to be certified as a purple special.
I have a motion.
I make a motion to favor the resolution supporting military families.
Any discussion on it?
When?
We'll have to submit it all to the state, so I don't know how often they roll through and announce. I think they do it twice a year. So if we can get it in early in the year, maybe by summer, we would have that endorsement. We'll have everything live before then. Obviously, Michelle's working on the display case right now. She's working with Kevin Herp to get some memorabilia from some of our veterans. Lots of cool history from here in Tell City.
It'd go for Mrs. Webb to grab some of the spectrums in the interview.
Yep.
How far back do we go for the memorabilia?
There's no, there's no timeline on it. Kevin was talking about, I guess, the first person to lay a read that the two million unknown soldier was from Tell City. I have no idea. But he's got all this information. So there's no, I mean, if you've got similar war stuff, that'd be great.
I guess the safety last of World War II stuff.
I was trying to, I didn't know.
I didn't know. No, World War II, I think would be appropriate, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll get with Michelle Glenn then, if you're interested, and help set up that display.
Aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Support staff handbook.
So first read on the support staff handbook was last month. This is the second read. This will convey to the support staff a 3% increase starting January 1. That's in line with the raises given to the certified staff. They also add the CNA positions like that. So I ask for your approval on support staff handbook.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the support staff handbook.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion. If there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Wrestling overnight field trip.
Wrestling team is requesting permission to go to Team State. It's in Franklin. At Franklin Community Schools this year, just south of Bendy. Parents will be taking their athletes up and having the rooms for them. Coaches will use activity buses for transportation. And of course, as always this time of year, it is contingent on the weather. So we ask for your permission to go to Team State.
What is the date, Cindy?
The date for the trip is, yeah. 1/9 to 1/10 of 26. So the weekend after we get back from school. Or from break, I mean.
Each of the kids will be staying in the room with their parents.
That's what, yeah, that's what the packet said. They'll take them up on the activity bus if the parents are going.
There is a control discipline.
Don't disagree.
I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the wrestling overnight trip.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. You're not going to read all this.
I didn't. Didn't plan to unless you really want to.
Next up, Neola.
Second read.
Volume 38.
Second read on volume 38 and number one. So if you have any questions or comments, there's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them there. I don't know how anybody can keep up with all the changes every year. It's just, it's impossible.
No, it's a moving target every year.
And it's hard to comply.
It is.
Because it's the, the, they're moving the bases, to keep up with the changes. I mean, if you read somebody's, I don't know how you'd have time to do that. Obviously, it is.
It's kind of like the NCAA rulebook used to be, and then they just threw it out the window and then you can play your mind.
A lot of these reactions.
They are, there are reactions. And, and, you know, they say a safety manual is always made by mistakes. That's why it's in the manual, not because somebody did it. And that's what this is about. I don't remember it being this intense eight, nine years.
No. We used to do, we used to do one policy update a year. Now we're doing two and three. Pretty regularly, pretty extensive, dude. Yes, yes.
And it's all the buttons. Every one issue is changing as a button issue.
Yep.
Somebody's pushed a button, so they're trying to keep up with it. Aye. Do I have a motion?
I'm just making a motion to, to, to approve the, to make a motion to approve. Neola, volume 38, the one.
Thank you, Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Any other such other business that should come before the board?
So under such other business that should come before the board, we want to discuss some of the changes and some of the direction on the new gym. I think primarily the, you know, the idea of the windows, clear stories. So at each of your desks, you have a proposal here that shows some, you know, this is the, this is the compromise version where you've got full-length windows on each corner and then clear stories through the middle that mirrors could be underneath, outlets could be underneath. You could have some privacy, but still also have some, some show and some blitz. John and Chris are not in here, but they have been sending me information about the weights that they want in the weight room. I think they've talked with the coaches, so we've got full samples and equipment specs and those kinds of things. We really just need, you know, direction on, and we've got a lot of it from that spreadsheet because there was, I mean, everybody pretty much agreed on the questions in the spreadsheet. So really it's just this design, where do you want to go with, with the front of the building?
Do the weights that they buy for it, they are including the original cost that we have to have approved.
No, the, the numbers that UDA have given us are just for the box. No equipment.
No balls, no soccer, volleyball nets.
Buy all the equipment later, it doesn't count. They couldn't have forces to go to.
We would have to have a separation in there. I mean, we couldn't build the box and then use that bond money. We would have to use a different fund to pay for them, is what I'm saying. And that could be operations, that rainy day, that.
Yeah, to send costs to Vegas.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. To standard eight-five, I mean, that, that is one option we would do is not necessarily buy all new equipment right away. Put that in later. Things like volleyball nets and basketball balls, those need to be done with, with the construction. Good timing, we just started. But as far as those things go, they can, they can work.
Does somebody have an answer on what equipment is going to transfer out of that weight room to me?
There are two, there are two double racks that are down there that will move up.
Free weights? Don't you mean?
Yeah. Well, the racks. So they're actually, it's a, it's called a double rack because they're back to back. You put them down the middle and then you have all of your wall space sold. So there's two double racks down there that we can use to pull up. So we would need those two and six more. And then a few of the, of the free weights down there, we could take and move up. But we, we would have to get some more.
As far as equipment that the slide comes, that would require electrical. What, what in today's?
TVs fans, TVs and fans are a little too many.
None of the weight equipment?
You will have, cardio, anything in there?
No, because we got the cardio room down here. We got, we got a whole room designated for cardio down off of the auxiliary. And the vast majority of the cardio stuff doesn't, doesn't have plug into it.
It's all battery rechargeable or?
Well, they just, they don't have, they don't make screens on them or anything, so you don't need to plug them in.
So the idea here then is just going to be racks in this weight room? It's strictly going to be that?
Pretty much, yeah. Well, we got the treadmill in there.
The kids go in there too. I was at a meeting today and it's, it's this topic. One of the things, it was on schools and construction and the topic that got devolved into is bullet resistant and security license. And one of the things that, that people in our industry are starting to get worried about. And I learned today that Jefferson County Schools, every school in Jefferson County now is, is a secure bullet resistant facility. I said, Joe, you mean they did their entrances? No, they did the entire building. So the old adage is we secure that door and then go down here, right? That's, we know that's the very possibility. But they're securing all of the buildings. It's substantial. It's millions. All of the windows are bullet, all of them, bullet resistant. On, the old school even did both levels, which I thought was overkill, but it's not, you know, it is on, it's that very stuff. So, when we, when, we've had this, we've talking about this, I'm afraid it's going to be in the next ten years, I'm afraid they're going to say, all schools, and this is part of the push on public education, is going to have to secure the buildings with product, X, Y, or Z, and, you know, we're talking excessive hundred, hundred fifty dollars per square foot for this stuff, and, and when, I think when we look at this, and, and I understand all of us's thoughts on, the look, I like the look, we all like the look, we just need to consider what we do now, we may be forced to change it in the next few years, because it's everywhere, every school that we've looked at in the last five weeks is going bullet resistant, it's down to the classroom doors now.
You're saying we should start, if we're trying to, my just, what is it now, so we don't have to?
I've got an opinion on it, but I want to, I, I get, I want that look too. I want mirrors, we're not, this layout here is, we're not affecting the, the east and west, we're keeping the, the two big, these windows are a hundred and forty-four inches, I'm just trying to minimize what could happen to us in the future. And still give us that electrical, the mirrors, give us all that room to put that stuff against a solid wall where we can't if it's glass. And then looking at the bullet resistant, which we're all going to have to go to before long, minimizing that cost now, it's all, you know, we'll all just have to decide what we're going to do. I'm just giving you the things that I learned just today, but again, in the last five weeks, I've been four schools, and they all are going bullet resistant places, it's something that we have to consider, because it's, I don't know where that, if it comes to manate out, I don't know where that comes from, I don't know where all schools are.
Ready day.
Ready day?
You know the difference with the cost it would be from doing it without bullets?
You can, you can look at the, just in, if we just look at the, the, the east and west, north face windows, you're talking square footage, you're talking eighteen dollars a square foot, they're twelve by, they're twelve by eight, so ninety-seven square feet, ninety-six square feet, you're talking four, five grand versus.
Which window?
Twelve hundred? Three twenty. If we have to convert them.
If we can afford that in the original legend.
Absolutely, we don't.
I, I think that'd be great, I mean, I don't know if we're getting close to that.
That's, that is the ideal thing to do, yeah, be done with it. Other than this hall, this glass hall is the only place we're really exposed to like that, besides engine stores.
Right.
This and that are the most exposed areas, a smaller ground level.
I agree with Larry, or I agree, we have the money, let's do it now.
Yeah, be done with it.
But we kind of know what that, you can tell, you know, being in that business, you can tell us.
I think.
Do we need to have it as an option, or can we do a base bid and then do a?
Do an, do an alternate. I, I think that's a fair thought right now, but we do an alternate, if, if this is the plane, what do we do, all five of them and the flankers? Do the, all the bases where we're most exposed. So, if you looked at this, you would do, you would do all of this and all of this on the lower level to stop penetration, nobody's going to be able to climb up through that hole up there. But, yeah, I, I like, that's a good idea, just go ahead and do it as an alternate, let's, let's get a number.
Yeah, if we, all of them. And still say, I'm going to do a three point five.
I mean, I don't want to have a ton of alternates, I think that's annoying, but.
That's a better one.
How's your D one?
Yeah. It's either, it's either glass or this product. One of two.
Unless it's tiny glass, it's just move.
And that is something that we could, you don't have to go to this school secure safety grant with, but that's, it's matching and it, you don't ever get what you asked for. If you ask for fifty, you usually get twenty and then you match that, and it, it wouldn't be something that we could use to do everything.
Match it one, one, or?
It's a, yeah.
It's just something I, I, I don't know, it just really got brought to light today in the discussion, and then we're looking at this, ooh, wow, this could affect us, you know, we put it in five years to go. As an alternate, it's a fantastic idea.
I don't, I don't want to like this design compared to the, the other one, but I know we're. Well, importantly, we need to decide tonight, so UDA can get going.
How important is?
I mean, I know, one of the schools, my wife worked at one of the schools that you talked about, and they had two drive-by shootings in six.
No!
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Jefferson County, yeah.
Yeah, Jefferson County.
Yeah.
And with their, with their union, but they do it one school and they have to do it all. So, you know, most of your, most of your east end schools are trying to make them a little bit safer.
Sure. How, how important are the mirrors in here? Because we don't have any else, we don't have any work for it.
John doesn't, no, you.
I mean, we would not have to, have to have all that many mirrors, um, they're nice for if a kid has, you know, bad form, you can put them in front of the mirror so they can see what they're doing, you know, so they can see what they're doing wrong.
Can the mirrors, can the mirrors go between the windows?
What's that?
Can mirrors go between the windows, is that, is that adequate?
Yeah, I'm thinking down the back, I, I would rather see the windows go on the wall towards, towards the gym.
I think that's, I think that's eight feet, or eighty, eighty, eighty-eight inches between the windows, that's what it is.
No, I cannot read this.
I think it's, I think it's eighty-eight.
So, that would probably be sufficient for the mirrors.
But I mean, we, we added extra windows and we did it with the bulletproof, you're talking, and then you're also, you know, the privacy thing, um, I'm not saying I'm dead set on another design, I'm just saying I definitely like the other design better, that's me personally.
Now, this is, I understand, view inside looking out, so, yeah, you know, we could bring the center one down, and then put the most exposed machines on the two that have the upper, first story. That would be it. That's it. That's our two thoughts, is security and how do you work the other thing? The other issue. How do you private? Privacy, thank you. Our two concerns are, and, and as the architect has stated, the white force part, they have those who are all in favor, but then they have a group of citizens that are outraged, that they're exposed to, to, to the athletes, because anybody could walk right up, so I, I, I get both ways, I just, I don't want that, I don't, I just don't know how we do it, we talked about the dot matrix film, that's a, that's a.
If we do the dot matrix film, then why are we having windows? I'm.
You can see out, they can't see in.
That's not the point of this though, right?
I know.
Right, it's the order. I'm not, I'm just trying to.
Sure, you're being an advocate, that's what we have to do.
Yeah, if, if the windows are there for people to see us and they're working hard, then the only cut up is stupid.
Got you, got you.
Yeah. We can see out, but they, they can't see in, so then why have the windows, right?
Because they want to see out, yes, I, I'm not thinking of having that many windows. Where are the other schools that built the gyms, are they putting the same windows in?
The ones we went to in Crawford, they're all.
They're, they're.
They're just big gyms, I mean, there's, there's no windows in them, I don't even think they had them up at the top of them, um, when you go into Crawford, it's like you're going into the building, because they, they grouped those in with a big renovation project, that's why they didn't have to worry about re, kind of threshold, because they had, so they're, yeah, to hear it in. I just think it's, for me personally, I want our students to have something private, like this is a new shiny object. It's a, athletics isn't everything, of course, but it also builds a lot of character, I think that seeing other athletes in there working can spur some want to, I say, of the kids, that's, that's my thought, I get to safety concern, and as a parent, I wouldn't, I'm not concerned with my daughter working out in there, but I can understand why the parent could be, so.
I, I mean, I, I would love to see more of them, I think, really, gotta use it as a selling point, you know, I think people can see it, and, you know, our, our E teachers asked some of the girls, you know, would you, would you feel uncomfortable if we put windows in there, it's downing, they, across the board, they said, the girls had no problem with people seeing them work out.
Is the old weight room going to stay intact with equipment? So, if there is a concern, that's always an option too, right?
Good point, yeah, that's a good point. But it's going to stay somewhat usable, not all the new fancy stuff will be moved in there, but we'll keep it down there too.
Mainly, what we're looking at is if we had those two, the junior high classes could use the gym in Bryan Taylor, and then the high school classes could use the one down there, so.
And then as you, as you're in junior high, you know that year or two, you're going to be moving into the big house.
Right.
Closest.
I ought to get my left arm down something like this. For sport out of the bleachers.
But I kind of, I mean, I kind of want it to be where somebody driving by looks in and says, man, that, that is really cool, I want to go here, you know, I, I just feel like we have to sell ourselves in this day and age, or they're going to go somewhere else, you know, they have a choice.
But I think we also have to sell safety too, though, to make people.
If we got a door for, for.
Same.
We just have.
Any. Easily gyms here in town, both gyms, people walk by and you can look in and see who's working out, not, not, but it's not students. No.
It is, but.
But I mean, I'm talking from a privacy perspective, not a safety.
As Ross said, when you, Gibson, when you enter their gym, you walk right by their weight room. It's, it's impressive, it's pretty impressive, all, you know, all the athletes are doing and all, walking by there.
So, do I tell UDA?
Like it is, the consent is not getting. And do an alternate?
Put an alternate. Full-length windows with an alternate for resistant glass.
All length ones on the lower, right, on the lower portion of the, not the upper. On this part.
Not on the clear stories.
Not, not, not anything across the top, that's correct, whether they're, uh, three wide, six wide, it's only the lower length.
How tall is, how far from the ground?
Eighty-eight, it's eighteen inches and then another eighty-eight, works out block height, is why they do that like that.
Their difference in the frames, those, those stick plus.
Get it for this one inch placing.
The UDA actually takes those counts out, but.
Correct, if we have to in the future, just like all this can all be pulled, the glass can be pulled.
What's that new, little frame and all that stuff?
If, if they go to ballistic, it is, you start going to blast, then it all has, most of them aren't doing ballistic, they're doing bullet resistant.
What are we living?
It is, and then the time that it's a sport. It's standing. What other issues, John?
Like you said, the, the spreadsheet, I mean, everybody else was pretty much in agreement on the spreadsheet items, so, I mean, some good things. I, I, I think this was the big hangup that they needed us to get done so we could move forward. I didn't spend all our time on the audio, video portion of that, but.
You got that money, very nice.
Well, I think Chris had mentioned that we could hold off on putting audio in the weight room, making sure we have a PA for the gym, but maybe not a separate one for the weight room until later, we can always come back and add those kinds of things, it's just like the LED scoreboards, we need to, we can pull them.
As long as the electricals installed.
Yeah, we put the electrical in, we put everything where it needs to be, and then we find, you know, a, a company that, a foundry or something that wants.
I think.
No, I mean, I just mean, you know, we get lots of support from a packet, from ATTC, I don't think we would have a problem finding advertising for, for things like that.
It's, it's not like we have to do everything hardware today.
Right.
It can all be, electrical's there, we can install it, everything's wireless, everything's Bluetooth, there's so much we can do.
The big thing that we need to do is the box, that's it, and the box has got to be under eight point five.
Being principal and assistant principal and the athletic director are taking care of all of the other questions that they have.
The four of us have, yes, I.
And their superintendent, yeah.
The bleachers. When I was sitting over there on seventeen. The bleacher storage, that's all. Yeah, I believe so. They should fit in that ten-foot section, they did at Crawford, I mean, perspective now, almost identically what Crawford had, ledger-wise and it's storage-wise. The only other thought it has is, really, the only time you need to move them is your playing cross courts, right? Right. Could you just put them to the, or the big court goals are, let them over there.
That's why we make that building.
Well, that's what I'm saying, with as much room as we've added, we might not erect them up, to be honest with you, maybe.
And I, we, we can tell if our, our grandchildren, the basketball, the speech hearing people think, well, Matt, I said, oh yeah, this goes through, it's going to matter, first, second graders, and then third and fourth pile on top of each other. Big help, especially here, with getting the student in and out of school for eight or nine second, right, that's what it's going to matter, for practice.
The people you talked to there were basically a figure of the gym, the gym?
Oh, oh, yeah, we were playing, we were playing on, you know, but when, when John was so proud of, we were playing on the cafeteria, but you know what, at least we had a place to play.
The other thing I've heard of people, this is something they've been wanting for a long time, is that like.
But, as long as we can, that.
Yeah, as long as we want it, we keep it under, we don't have to, yeah, have a referendum of these taxes anyway, so.
Now, people did comment, so how much is our taxes, actually, taxes are, we're actually, they went and tell our bonding is dropping, what's your five, so, that's, that's a big deal.
Well, that pension debt falling off this year is huge.
Pension debt and the foundry's assessed valuation, it's a, it's a big, all the you know, all the bonding people go, oh, this is big.
Yeah, that AV coming off next year is going to help us whenever everybody else is struggling, when everybody else is taking that tax hit the second year of this, this new law, it's going to save our kids.
Enjoy the food.
Yep. Okay.
Anybody have anything else to add to it?
John, anything else?
I just like, if you're going to do it, I think you need to do it right the first time.
I'm going to try it. Lot of opinions.
Well, the bond actually did go through, uh, everything sold very well, uh, the paperwork is here, got a ton for Hannah and Tony to sign, and then I've got the Philly Corporation team coming in later this week to sign off on theirs, uh, but the financial people were very, very pleased with the way the bond sold, uh, sold a little better than they thought it would, so we were able to get a little bit of money out of that deal. Last thing before we move on, uh, Wes Shireman stopped by again today, they're basically a clerk of the works, uh, I told him I didn't know if we were at that point yet or not, uh, I told him we were working with UDA, and his best bet would be to reach out to them to see what they thought would be necessary, uh, but he left some information on what they've done, Shireman basically oversaw the construction of Crawford and Harry and.
Maybe some decree?
Yeah.
I don't remember, we gave some decree.
So, that's what they do, basically, if we say we've got an eight point five million dollar budget, they make sure we hit it, uh, but I don't know what the costs are, I don't know what all that is, so, if you wanted to see the literature, it's there. To wrap things up, don't forget that party on thirteenth, if you can make it, and it's not icy and snowy, uh, happy to have you there, and the week after that, we're out for two weeks, or, great, finals starting next week at the high school, lots of scoring events, including one going on right now, so, we can wrap this up. Lots of sporting events, including one going on right now, so we can wrap this up and go watch some basketball.
So, if it is icy and snowy, you, you postpone it?
Will you postpone it if it's icy or snowy, or are we rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine?
Well, it pays the charges. They don't charge, they're a little, we're out there. It is, it's, it's. I'm sorry, I'm a lot to be paid on this stuff.
Michigan. There are a couple of people that have said the same thing, they have worked Christmas parties that day too. It's, it's hard to find a day that we can do it without a basketball game or a wrestling tournament somewhere two hours away. So, this is the day that, that worked. So, if you can be there, we'd love to see you.
If there's nothing else that's needed to jump.
Thanks, folks. So, you guys' stuff is all back here, normal, Tony?
Yeah.
You need to do all that.
Nobody did any English on Thursday.
I've signed the paperwork from U D A and that's all I've heard of this. The chillers for the high school and those high schools. So, I'm glad you said that.